We ready to go? All righty. Good evening. I'm going to go ahead and call a meeting to order. This is the Los Alamitos City Council Special Meeting, Monday, May 21st at 5:00 p.m. Roll call.
Mayor Edgar.
Here.
Mayor Protem Kusamoto.
Here.
Councilmember Chirko.
Here.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
All righty. With special orders of the day, today's primarily, for this special meeting, is a budget review, the first part, and then we've got closed session, and the city attorney will take us out from that perspective. First up, item 3A, Seven-Year Capital Improvement Program, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This is the part in the budget process for fiscal year 2018-2019 where we discuss the seven-year capital improvement program and the vehicle and equipment replacement schedule for 2018-2019. So the seven-year period of the CIP is fiscal years 2018-19 through 2024-25, and the Director of Administrative Services and our engineer and staff, we have reviewed this with the Budget Standing Committee and incorporated comments that they gave staff into the staff report, and we're here tonight to present the information to the full council and take any questions that you may have. And at this time, I have the interim Director of Administrative Services, Maria Luisa Valdez, go into the staff report.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, so so far, we've, in our workshops, we focused in on the general fund operating budget, but today we'll go over the capital budget and the capital needs and priorities of each department. So we've asked each department to go through their priorities for capital projects and found the sources of funding from the special revenue funds, the capital project funds, and the internal service funds. Summarize on page two of the staff report, you'll see all the projects and the fund that will provide the available resources. Mr. Dave Hunt will go over the capital projects and I'll be here for any questions you have on the funding source.
All right, thank you very much. Leave on your desk, we gave you 11 by 17s that show the seven-year CIP that's on there so that you guys can see it easier. Brief introduction to this, unless ever you've seen this before, we've broken down into different categories. I'm going to go over the street and drainage projects, and then add their even subcategories. The first one is just our regular yearly work, that items one through eight, those are typical things that our public works crew do out there on a yearly basis. The one that we have kind of changed from the past, we have upped, is our arterial and residential tree trimming and the removal program. That used to run, we were putting in there $30,000, $35,000 in there. We bumped it up to $55,000 because last year they actually spent $51,000, so we kind of, because they've had a lot more tree damages lately and the age of the trees, the drought is kind of seeing some effects that we had in the past, so we've bumped that number up to kind of match what they spent this last year. So I'll just give you an idea of what that is. So that's a little bit higher this year. The rest of them are kind of typical numbers that we spend for taking care of this trees, the streets, some tree trimmings, some intersection improvements, mainly safety issues in that group in there. The second group, we've got the ADA study. We typically do some money for ADA ramps and sidewalks. You'll see I have zero in there for this category this year, items eight and nine, I mean, excuse me, yeah, eight, nine and 10, I mean. We have some money into facilities for ADA improvement, so you'll see that further back in the trail. You'll, I'll kind of mention now, you'll see different colors in there, green, and I'm not quite sure what color that is, but it's kind of like a pinkish-orange that's in there. The green is typically money that we get from our gas tax, our Measure M, fair share money, we get from OCTA, and then the other colored one is one we get from special projects that we apply for through funding, through grants, and so that's not money that's coming from our normal sources, it's additional money that's in there. So on the special funded projects, you'll see the first one, I have the Greenbrook Neighborhood, there's a special SB1 gas tax, so that $208,000 is gas tax money, but it's the special gas tax money that just kicked in last year and this year. It's above and beyond our normal gas tax money that we get, and we're using the rest of the money for Measure M money to help improve some streets in the area. We got some money last year to do some work in the neighborhood. I talked to them, I said, can we combine last year and this year, so we're only disrupting the neighborhood at one time? And they said, yes, you can build both projects together, makes sense, you can save the money. So we actually have that money in a carryover the last year, it was like $67,000. That's in a carryover to add in with the money here so we can do majority of the neighborhood in Greenbrook. There's, the items 12 and 13 are programs that we will try and get money for through applications that we have submitted. We have not, and 14, we have not heard from these, these may drop off, and then if that drops off, the money in green can be used for other street projects, or it can be saved for next year to help with our fair share, or our, help us get some funding for other projects with our matching funds. But just so you know, we have not heard on the Catala Synchronization one, also the Safe Route to School program, and that's a grant to get money to try and get groups together to help other groups fund the projects, because we cannot as a prime, you know, submit applications for that, it has to come through another group on that line.
So I have a question about that. So I am surprised, I know that it's been in the weekly, but what are we doing with Safe Routes to School?
Well, this was an application that was submitted by Stephen Mendoza and Tom.
But didn't you just state that we can't be an applicant? Really grassroots.
No. This is, they encourage the grassroots to help them form a grassroots and to help them...
So my question, my question is, David, so to the City Manager, who is the grassroots that we're trying to help?
Well, we would research that, working with the school district. The school district has agreed to be a co-applicant on this, to go out and search for it, but we would then determine that, you know, we look for the grassroots.
So, okay, so I'm really troubled with this, because in the ad hoc that we had established before of Councilmember Hasselbrink and myself, I was very clear that this is a community-wide kind of initiative that really needs to be, when you look at the entire footprint of the school district, it needs to be them, right? Those people, not us, because we only have a little portion of the footprint of the school district. So I'm really troubled, because, and then the other question, I sent you a whole list of questions that have not yet been answered, but are matching funds required for this funding? And if so, is it coming out of our general fund to match something that may be applicable to Seal Beach because of Safe Routes to School down there at McGaw? Or is it...
David, there is matching funds involved in this, right? The gas tax and the general fund.
There is, we're using some gas tax, and then they also have what they call, come out of the general fund, I say salaries, they...
So I guess my question is, how do we rationalize spending general fund monies for a, you know, Safe Routes to School, which I'm all in favor of, but this is something that, when you look at the entire footprint of the school district, it may really be a Rossmore issue, which we ought to be, you know, concerned about, and I say we should support that, but this is clearly a school district, or, you know, there was an opportunity a few years, a couple years ago, because of the whole restriping of Rossmore, the no parking, or the bike lanes that are going away, that would have been a perfect opportunity for a grassroots organization to rise up and then kind of take this on. So this one, I'm struggling as to why do we have this on our agenda? Why are we spending general fund monies on something that really has a far bigger impact than, you know, our city? So I'm, you know, kind of like, I just want to see my questions answered, Brett, because they're out there still, and I'm waiting for the response, okay? Because when can I get those?
I did respond to you a couple of different times, but in terms of the school, we reached out to the school district to see if they would take the lead.
Let me be real clear, there were, like, I think, seven questions that I asked, and not one of them was answered, okay?
I tried to answer your question, but I'll go back and look.
No, you did not try, you just, you gave a response back saying that you talked with the superintendent of the schools and thought it was a good idea, but you don't work for the superintendent of the schools, you work for us. We gave you direction, and I don't see anything that changed that, so I think that you need to kind of go look at that, maybe take a step back, and this is something, a grassroots organization, probably multiple organizations, that is not the city, it's not the intern that we got on board that has free time, but I think you need to take a look at all that and really kind of rationalize, is this something that we should be doing if it's going to really be helping Rossmore? It doesn't make sense for me that we spend general fund monies to match funding that we go and expend in Rossmore, and I don't even know how we do that from a, you know, municipality standpoint, because that, we have to go to the county and get those kind of permissions, right? Those entitlements.
I'll go back and look at the questions that you had.
And please answer those, and I think maybe the appropriate thing is to answer those in a, perhaps a weekly to the council, so they can understand where I'm coming from as to why these questions are asked. I think, I don't know, Councilmember Hasselbrink, you want to, is that going to cover?
Yeah, I've got some other, I'll let Dave go through his things, and then I have some other questions, and I'll address that as well.
Okay. Item 14 is a grant that we're applying through OCTA to put screens on our catch basins, kind of environmental, it's a Tier One environmental grant that's on there. The application's been turned in, we won't hear about that for a few months if we were awarded that or not, so that could drop off also. Items 15 and 16 are community development block grant monies that we have been successful at, and that's to kind of finish up some of the alleys that we have in our neighborhoods out there, it'll be the last, actually, two alleys that are still asphalt and falling apart from the concrete. Number 17 is our pavement management study we have to do every two years. In about every five years, you need to kind of redo the entire city, that's why it's more money in this current year than I have in the past years, because we bumped it up to redo more of the city, because we have to kind of cover the entire city in a certain timeframe of new, you know, new evaluations of the streets. And that kind of covers for the roads and streets. The rest of them are unfunded projects in this category until we get to, three pages back, we get to the top where it says facilities on the top left page. Once you get there, where we start over with items one. So one, two, three, and four are items that we want to cover this year. The first one is the Finley Pump Station. The Finley Pump Station is a storm drain pump station that has had, built in the late 60s. In the last few years, it's had trouble operating, but it was still operating this year on the last few storms. The main pump engine quit working, wouldn't start, had a crew go out there and look at it, and they said that the parts, you know, they couldn't find parts because the engine's so old, and it was basically unrepairable. Our second, we have a 50 horsepower electrical motor as part of it, is a backup, and it froze up on the last storm, so we have some issues out there that we have to get done before the next winter season, so, because that neighborhood relies on that to drain the streets, so it's an issue that's out there. The second item is our City Hall generator. Our generator out here is limping along. It right now feeds just the police station and the lights in the council room, and the $150,000 would get it to do the entire City Hall and Public Works Department, but not the community center, so it would take care of this complex. We put that out to bid once, and we didn't have enough money to do it, so it's been kind of sitting on the back burner, but it's to the point where we need to make sure that we have it operational. It runs at about a 13% capacity right now when it is on. The police department get by, but if we have it happen during a heat wave, I think one time the police department, that happened, and everything kind of went haywire in there, so this is something we feel also is very important. The third item is the community center and youth center ADA ramps. ADA ramps and sidewalk repairs. I gave you in the back of your, if you look underneath your pile, there's 11 by 17 spreadsheet, and we did a study a while back that kind of shows all the different ADA facilities that we need to improve throughout the city. This is just the parks, all the different parks and items on there, and we have several in the community center, the Ruth Center, preschool, and then all the different parks in there. We're proposing to kind of go through the entire list and hit the top $45,000 worth of items on there, working closely with the Parks Department and areas in there to try and improve some areas in there, like bathrooms, doors, and other items in there that are substandard, especially for the community center and the seniors that are in there and getting back and forth, so that's what that money is for. Also, the, our Los Al TV server has been on the verge of collapsing, falling apart. It's been talked about quite a few often times, but there's a $10,000 item in there to get the server fixed, or replace it, not fix, it's so old, to get it done. And so that's for the Parks Group. Down at the police department, they call the front lobby hardening, and that is to make their, kind of like what you see in banks and things, where you go in there and you got the thick plastic to make it safe in there. They're pretty exposed in their lobby, and this would help secure that and make it a safer place for them, along with some security cameras to go around the areas so they can have inside, they can look and see what's going on outside and all around their building in there. So those are two items that they were, was on the top of their list. They had several other items out there that we kind of spread around. That pretty much goes through what we are proposing to do on our list. Oh, we do have the Parks Department, excuse me, near the next page back, a few pages back, you'll see the Parks Department itself. Their priorities on their money, they have is Litton, Little Cottonwood Park, the parking lot and the basketball courts are in various, I mean, they're basically look like, we call it alligator cracks, because they started looking like alligator skin back there, it's starting to fall apart and becoming kind of hazardous to people tripping falls and all that in the actual parking lot. We have some items in there to replace some plants out in Coyote Creek Park, and then another item was the community center, they want an enclosure for some outdoor storage they have in the back, where they have a lot of equipment that kind of sits out and it needs to be in a storage so it's safer and out of the elements of the weather. They do also would like Labradet Park Playground Equipment, it's the oldest park we have with the oldest playground equipment out there, doesn't meet the current safety standards that we have, and that's out there in the Parks Department. And then with that, some turf renovations for Labradet Park, it's out there. Be a good time to do that, the water district right now is putting in some water lines in there and a drain line, and they're going to repair what they take out, but after that, we want to fix up the grass and do this, so that's, where I speak again, and that kind of covers what we propose to do in the next year. Like I say, we do the seven-year plan, it's mainly, the seven years kind of, when the city does, it's kind of also done by OCTA, they want to see a seven-year plan for all our street projects, and that's mainly, if we come up with some future funding, and we don't have it on our seven-year plan, they're going to say it wasn't part of our priority, and why should they give us extra grant money for it? So it's, that's the main purpose of a seven-year plan for them, for us, it's so we planned our expenditures at the city. I did also give you a map that kind of shows what we've done at the city since 2003, kind of with the year on it, that's the year they were built. I also use this when utility companies come in, because we have a five-year moratorium on digging up our streets, it's used for that too, but it's also a good thing where you can kind of see when things were built, and the areas in red are overlay projects, areas in blue were old slurry seals, just so you know what the colors mean, and we're trying to go through and cover some of the areas in blue that were slurry sealed back in 2000 and five, and six, and a few in eight. That was kind of a quick and dirty way to kind of get your street to look better, but in the long run, the streets down below had a lot of cracks and stuff in it, and then it's starting to show, so we're attacking those streets, you know, that is on our priority list now.
So Dave, can I ask you a question? So on the front chart, where you have project number 11, Greenbrook Neighborhood?
Yes.
And you have about $340,000, is that to handle the blue where you show in 2008 it was slurry sealed?
Yeah, plus I have the $67,000 from the year before to go in there and handle that blue area.
So is this money for actual repaving, then?
To grind and do an overlay.
Okay, yeah, okay.
There's one street in there that they recommended just to slurry seal on, that's one of the smaller streets, because it wasn't in bad shape. When my engineers go out and design it, though, we really, we reevaluate that, and a lot of times we end up grinding and overlaying those two.
Okay, thank you.
So with that, there's sufficient funds in the funding sources that are listed in the funding source in that worksheet, but if there's any questions on that, I'm happy to clarify as well.
Great. Before we break to the council and go through the, one question I have on the funding, based on your last comment, so when you look at the summary of this, the projected balance for the end of the year, July 1st, 2018, $650,000, revenues $998, so it looks like we have about $1 million of revenue, and we're spending 1.3. So that differential there of about $335,000, which is in page two of the staff report, what do we tell the public when we say we're spending more than what we're taking in? What would be like the summary point that you would, that we would tell the public of why we're spending more than we're taking in? Do you see where I'm talking about?
You're saying the 1.3 million of projects over the 998?
Yeah, if you look on page two of the staff report, 2018-19 Capital Improvement Projects, 1.3 million, and you see the revenue for the same period, $998, so it's a difference of 335.
Okay.
And again, a lot of this, I think, has to do with the timing and grants and matching and all that, but at the high level, because there's a lot of attachments to go through, what would you say the two or three drivers are for the differential of the extra $300,000 we're spending over the revenue we take in?
There's available fund balance due to some grants that sometimes don't go through, especially when it comes to Measure M or gas tax, and we have that in the projected fund balance at the end of the year, so that's unused, so that'll, it's a carryover, some of the projects are just carryovers, but I will reflect that in the fund balance, but some that are dropped will just drop down, and that's why we'll have a fund balance, but we still do want to be resourceful and spend the amounts, that's why we try and have the fund balance not as low as possible, but just try and be useful of all the funds.
And again, I'm trying to get the table set before we actually dig into the details of this. So last year, the year we're in now, we're going to finish this year, we had a commensurate level of projects, and we may or may not have finished, those would be projects that were pushed into next year. Hit rate, or the approximate amount of projects or dollars that we had last year versus how much we finished, is that reflective of the 335,000? Do you have that easily available to just give us an answer? I'm kind of curious about our track record of how did we execute this last year, so I can see how realistic this is.
Yes, I, it's about 200,000, I can get you the exact amount at a later time, but it is about 200,000 that is in carryover, and that is reflected actually even in the projected fund balance as of July 1st, 2018, not even at the end. So I have that reflected because it's going to be a carryover anyway, and it was already approved by the council in the last year's budget. I have already appropriated for it, so it's already included in that fund balance, it's already carved out, and it's about 200,000, and I'll have to get back to you, which, there's only two projects.
If you could, yeah, get back with me. You know, we had the last meeting, we talked about a matrix study that kind of lagged for a long time, and I'm just wanting to see, are we on top of our capital improvement projects in total? I'd like to, in the staff report, if you can, for the weekly, I'd like to be able to see, I don't need the details, just the high level, we had 15 projects, we finished 12, and it was worth 1.4 million, and we only spent 1.8, or we spent 1.3, whatever it is, I just want to get a better idea of what the performance was of our execution of work in public works. With that, I'm going to go ahead and bring it back to council, and probably what I'd like to do, can I ask the ad hoc committee that actually looked at this, Councilmember Chirko, Councilmember Hasselbrink, could you give us any observations you have to help us dig into this a little bit? Either one of you can go first.
Ladies first. So a couple of things we did for, in the police department on item number 24, that was originally put out at 2019-20, and part of the gap closure, we asked every department to come in and see how they could close that gap, and the police department came in with a hiring delay that would save about $55,000. Because we're replacing the Finley Pump Station, that's going to save about $35,000 in the annual maintenance, so we moved the security cameras to 18-19, just because they were able to come up with that gap closure, and we didn't need it, so that's going to kind of solidify the lobby area. In parks, items seven and 11 with Labradet Park, it was slated for 2019-20, using existing reserves for parks, and so we just decided, because Labradet Park, the playground equipment there is over 20 years old, so the funds are already there, we weren't waiting for more funds to be able to do this, so we just decided to move it up. That's the only park in that area, the next closest one is Cottonwood Park, about three quarters of a mile away, so it's a highly-used park in that area over in Apartment Row.
Okay.
We also asked for the pedestrian bridges, I personally asked, I wanted these reprioritized. The first one was going to be the Catala Wallensford one, which would only affect Oak primarily, the one middle school, whereas the one at Bloomfield would affect LAE, McAuliffe, and the high school, and then the one at Cerritos would affect the high school of about 3,500 kids, so we just felt, and this is definitely wish list money, but we wanted to put them in the right priority, so if we did get any kind of grants or anything, that we would already have these in priority to affect the most student safety for each of the bridges.
Great.
The other thing is, and I brought this up at the budget ad hoc, I'm a little concerned that we're putting studies in our CIP. CIP by definition is the Capital Improvement Plan, and I know on item number 13, which is the Safe Routes to School, and there was one that looks like it dropped off, which was the SKAG Sustainability Planning Grant, that was also a study, we didn't know at the ad hoc, nobody really answered what exactly that was, that seems to have dropped off, but I want to be really careful that we're not putting studies in a CIP where council, as part of the approval process for the CIP, were also approving a study. The Safe Route to School, I agree with Mayor Protem Kusamoto, this is a grassroots, we were told that no municipalities could be the driver in this. This is $270,000, where $40,000 of it is using gas tech and general fund, where we could use for other things, and we're not even sure what this is going to get us. I don't like seeing this on the CIP list, because to me, that's construction, that's infrastructure, that's something tangible besides a study. We can account for, you know, the money otherwise, the grant money otherwise, but I just don't think it's placed in the right Excel spreadsheet. And then the other one on the OCT, you measured the catch basin inserts from the ad hoc committee, we've already applied for that two times, correct, and not been approved, so this is our third time?
That is correct.
Okay, do we have any kind of updated probability of getting this?
I spoke with them last week, and we submitted the application last week, they said they would get back to us in September, but they did review the application. They said they would get back to us in September, but they did review the application. So it's a little different and they did, I mean, they reviewed it, provided us feedback. We complied and submitted and they, it seemed to be hopeful this time.
Okay, because I just want to, you know, the gas tax between the catch basin inserts and the, the Safe Routes to School, that's 55, about $55,000 that we could reallocate to something else that's on this list that would have a greater impact on our residents.
Can I ask you guys though on, on 14 for the catch basins, is that an NPDES requirement? Or is that just an elective thing that there was money available for, so we decided that we're going to go?
It definitely helps us, if we get it, it definitely helps us with our NPDES compliance.
Is it an out of compliance issue or an elective issue?
It's, it's somewhere in the, in between. I mean, it will help us because it will capture that debris before it goes into the storm drain. So we definitely want to get it for NPDES compliance reasons.
Great, thank you.
So, and I think with that, that was all my comments. Councilwoman Churko, can I move on?
Yeah, I think you covered pretty much everything we did during the ad hoc committee meeting. And we went through all these items very specifically. We drilled down on them and made a lot of the improvements councilmember Hasselbrink suggested. And added some clarifications in here that I'm seeing. But I think she did a good, good summary.
Good deal, and we'll bring it back. Councilmember Murphy.
Could you give me the information on 12 and 14 as to who you spoke to? No, I don't need them now, just in an email. If I can follow up. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Go ahead.
One quick, I'm sorry. The other thing that we did ask staff to do was to, for the ADA, in the recreation facilities, we asked them to split up the community center and the youth center, just because it is two different user groups. One is contracted out to, to a user, so we just wanted to be able to really understand. Even if we combine them and do all the improvements together, we want to be able to understand of what cost of what. So that was the other little detail we asked them to do.
Okay, Mayor Protem.
Oh, thank you. So I do have a question, David, on the hardening of the police lobby. So could you say the one that's in there right now, it's not hardened enough? Or what's the, the existing condition of the lobby?
Well, I can let the police chief talk about that.
Yes, Mayor Protem, the, after the individual tried to come over the counter with that knife that day, we decided we at least put up a little piece of Plexiglas.
Okay.
And so it has like a quarter inch piece of Plexiglas that's actually separates.
Not hard at all then?
It's not, not target hard.
So I guess a question though, on my familiarity with like Lexan panels like that, they have a certain lifespan to it. And I want to say seven years, does that sound right? On the Lexan, you know, the, the big, you know, inch and a half thick panels, there's a limited life.
I think it's seven or 10, something.
Yeah, so I think, I guess the thing is when we do this, got to look ahead to budget the replacement, right? Because otherwise it becomes too brittle and it doesn't serve the purpose. So when you do that, David, when you kind of take a look, maybe not for this go around, but certainly a future budget year, you're going to need to look at the replacement of the Lexan panels.
Okay.
And when these things start, you know, reaching the end of their usable life. And that was the only, you know, kind of thought I had on this, so thank you.
Anything else? Okay, a couple of things. So like I said, I started, I'm really trying to look at this, the bigger picture. You know, if you look at the bigger picture of the, let's just say the 1.3 million dollars in total, about $250,000 of this is focused on parks. It would be helpful when you mark this report, when we actually post it publicly, that for item number 11, it says Green Brook Neighborhood. We actually put asphalt or streets because it's kind of out of category. There's the pavement management plan that starts in item 45. And, you know, this is where you're usually looking to see what neighborhood's coming up next and getting resurfaced or some sort of action. But, you know, so when you look at this, we're actually spending about 340,000 on streets, which is good. And then if you just kind of go through the unfunded projects, I totally agreed with. I do agree with councilmember Hasselbrink and Mayor Protem Kusamoto on the city, the Safe Routes to School program. I didn't, I was thinking we could, we either should postpone that or reevaluate that at a different time. And I was going to ask Rich to, on the OCTA help, so thank you. The other question I had is on ADA, on this, there's a study part, and I just want to make sure I'm reading this right. You know, there's also the ADA for Recreation Facilities budget that we were kind of given. And where is the ADA work that's in here again? What line item?
Oh.
In project number, I should say.
It's in Recreation?
Yeah, item three. Item three under Facilities is what?
Oh, Facilities.
Under Facilities.
Under Facilities?
Yeah, that's where we.
Is that like the first category, the very beginning? I, I guess what I was looking for, page four, okay, let me look.
Page four of Attachment 1. 45,000.
That's it.
Okay, okay. Yeah, remember we were dealing with some issues legally and we were trying to put together a plan to make sure we were addressing ADA? And I was looking at the very end of this where it said ADA study, nothing. Then I seen this ADA cost, I just wanted to make sure that we were actually doing something there.
Yeah, I moved it up into Facilities just to make it, because it's, we picked the community center and youth center there. So I put it up where.
Okay.
We also have the, we didn't have the park development monies before and we do have that incorporated in as a funding source over the next two fiscal years. So we're using some of that for the ADA in 1819.
Okay. Okay. And then I guess based on the pavement study plan that we are going to actually pay to update. You know, we're hitting Green Brook, it sounds like is the neighborhood this year. You know, the soundbite out there as we get ready, especially as the election starts coming, people start saying, hey, are we spending enough on our streets? And, you know, if you look, we're spending on average 20 to 25% of our CIP on streets, but we're almost spending the same amount of money on parks. And, you know, if you look at some of the streets, you know, I think that we probably want to just take a better look. I think I'm good with it this year, but I won't be here next year. I really do hope that we can prioritize, you know, really the streets component. I know we've been trying to make up for lost time on the parks, but, you know, I would like to try to get towards the 30, 40% spend if we can on actual real streets. And, you know, because I think that a lot of them out there do need help.
Yeah, and we would like to get to that point too. It's, and it's kind of the color of money too. So gas tax, as we have available gas tax monies, then we are able to appropriate that to the streets. And we have additional gas tax monies now, which is why we were able to bump up the tree trimming and some of these other items. If we take out, like councilmember Hasselbrink and Mayor Protem Kusamoto were talking about, if we take the Safe Routes to Schools program item out, 13, and we talked about this with the Standing Committee, that would free up more gas tax monies, which we can then move into street related projects. So, and then the, receiving the park development monies now allows us to do the improvements specifically citywide for parks and for community center improvement. So that's, that's the good news. The other thing, I just want, you know, this CIP, I think this year it tells a really positive story in terms of the improvements that we're able to make. And we talked about this with the Standing Committee and the improvements that the Standing Committee brought forward, I think, helped this story. So we're able to fund the Finley pump, which we don't really have any choice. I mean, it's a, we have to do that, we have to replace it now because it's, it's failed. The generator is incorporated into this budget. The, as we talked about, the safety glass and security cameras for the police department are incorporated into it. And then we've moved, based on the recommendations of the Standing Committee, we moved park monies from Labradet. It's much needed into this fiscal year, 1819. So it's, it's a really good story that we're able to tell and we appreciate the feedback from all of you going forward on this.
Cool, just a couple of last minute comments. So the LoSal TV server, I, you know, I wanted to make the council aware and staff. You know, I've had a discussion with Larry Strather on the LATV contract. And I know that that is, you know, coming to a point where potentially to an end. And I know there was some interest in the community potentially trying to find a partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. And, and I don't know if you guys have heard anything about that, of trying to look at that. But I, you know, I think longer term, the viability of LATV, we haven't heard a lot about it and the contract's coming to an end. And I just want to make sure that we aren't putting money into a server, but we don't really have the operations of LATV really thought through yet. So can, if you have an update or a thought on that, I'd really appreciate it.
We're trying, we're working with Larry to try to bring back the LoSal TV under his management. I mean, it's worked well in terms of the, the pain and suffering that we went through for many years with staff having to be so involved and spending so much of our time on LoSal TV. We have not had to do that. So I think it still is viable with Larry in the mix and we're planning on bringing an agreement back in June. And the server is just, it's dead.
So if you're bringing it back in June, that's next month. Have you had any, has anybody made any mention to you about partnering with the chamber?
I have not heard, no, I have not heard that. And Larry's, is Larry bringing that up to you? I mean, Larry has been discussing the renewal.
Well, I think if you look at the Chamber of Commerce, they, they're trying to, they have a different objective and they, they need some help. And I think there's a natural potential relationship there. But I don't know, you know, if you're thinking that the deal's going to be done by June and you guys haven't heard about it, then we probably need to kind of help expedite one way or the other.
Yeah, if Larry's reaching out to you on that, then we'll reach back out to him on that. Get that information.
Okay, well, I, I think that's all the comments I had, if we can. If everybody has no more comments, I'd entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the CIP with the exception of item 13, which is the Safe Routes to School. Reallocate the gas tax of $31,000 to other projects and then return the $8,500 of back to the general fund.
Okay. Okay, first and second, all in favor, say aye. Aye? All right. So let me do an administrative thing really quick. I understand everybody out in the audience, you're there. I didn't open up public comment for the first item. I would assume you possibly would want to make comment before we go into closed session. Let me ask, before we do this next item, proposed budget for vehicle and equipment replacement schedule. Does anybody in the audience have a comment regarding item number 3B? Just want to make sure. Anybody have any comment for item 3A that we just talked about with the capital improvement program? All righty, okay. So we'll go ahead and move on to item 3B, proposed budget for vehicle and equipment replacement schedule, city manager.
The interim director of administrative services will do the staff report.
So similarly to capital projects, each department reviewed their inventory of vehicles and equipment. And based on the results of that assessment and as reflected on the vehicle and equipment replacement schedule, which is attachment two of that staff report, we're coming forward with a request of 295,000. 35,000 comes from AQMD fund and then there's also vehicle and equipment fund for 224,000. There's six vehicles for replacement and three equipment items. And four come from the police department. Two come from service trucks for the public works and then there's three equipment items for public works. They, they are come and they exceeded the replacement cycle years, so that's why they are being requested for replacement at this time.
Okay, and then, yeah, then the summary then. So for the, the six vehicles to be replaced, the total value of those six vehicles is how much?
Yes, the six vehicles is 219,000.
Okay, and then the three pieces of equipment?
Is 40,000. Out of that 219,000 of the vehicles, 35,000 is for one vehicle and it's a parking enforcement vehicle. And that is coming from the police department. Since it doesn't have to be heavy duty or fast in, in that sense, we, we identified that there's about 80,000, over 80,000 in AQMD funds. So we are requesting that it be in compliant and be a fuel efficient car and requested from the AQMD fund to fund that, that vehicle. So there's sufficient fund balance in each fund, as you can see in the fiscal impact for AQMD and vehicles and equipment for this next fiscal year for 2018, 19. If we look at attachment two, which we just went over, the six vehicles for, you know, four for police and two for public works. In 1920, there's actual request, if we go through the cycle of years, there's a request for 346,000. At that point, in attachment three, I've, I've, and also on the fiscal impact, you can see that vehicles and equipment fund has a projected fund balance of about 180,000. But, so it wouldn't be able to fund this request in 1920. So at that point, we are foreseeing and probably recommending next year that we go into a vehicle lease at that point. Because it's more attractive for a loan agency to have a lease with the city once it's about 200 to 250,000. This year, we had, as, as you requested right now, there's 219,000 in vehicles, but we said that 35,000 would come from AQMD, which is a different funding source. So it wouldn't have to be leased from, like the vehicle and equipment fund. And since there weren't sufficient funds this year, this is what the proposed budget, this is what we had in the proposed budget.
Okay, that is staff report?
Yes.
Just again, real quick question, just so I can score keep at the very beginning. So we are going to basically get six new vehicles of some sort, that replacing six that we have. But we're going to buy a new one to do light duty traffic enforcement that doesn't need to be that fancy. Plus I, I know when I drive to the back, there's a lot of excess vehicles back there. Do we not have any other vehicles that we can use for parking enforcement that's already, you know, either in excess or has not been surplused? And I guess I'm specifically, maybe to you, city manager, from your perspective, I'd be interested that, you know, what's your view?
We, and we work with the police department to determine really what the needs are in terms of the existing fleet. What the, like we talked about the lighter used vehicles and then the future replacement. And we feel that we have a sufficient amount of vehicles to handle the ongoing operations. We have recently surplused or we're surplusing vehicles and they're going to auction. That recently took place, Sean?
Last week, they were picked up.
Oh, so, so we did clear out the back a little bit?
Yes.
Okay.
There were nine vehicles.
Nine in total? So I, I guess, you know, the, the police vehicle thing for me has always been a tough one. It's something that we need, but they're really expensive because they have to be outfitted. We've always had a hard time, so we set up this fund to be able to do it. We, how many total police vehicles do we have that are in service?
Mayor, city council members, there's a total of 15 vehicles that are assigned to the police department. We're actually short two at the moment. So that's, part of this purchase would then repurpose one of these vehicles into a support capacity. And then with the surplusing, particularly with the natural gas vehicles, those were requiring either significant maintenance or the replacement of the gas tanks. So that was, that was part of the reason for looking at an alternative fuel vehicle and using those funds. Because we did repurpose one of the prior vehicles as a, what would be our second parking enforcement vehicle for backup purposes. But also when, there are days when we have two parking aids on. So this would, the purchase would be the primary parking enforcement vehicle. And that's, that was our thought in, in the request.
Okay. So of the 14 or so police vehicles, how many are actually units? Because these are to replace units, correct?
Maybe I should have clarified. So one is to replace a unit, then there's a motorcycle and then the parking enforcement, like I mentioned. And then the other one is the unmarked vehicle.
Okay. Yeah, so my last comment, then I'll turn it back to the rest of council is I, I, you know, just because we have the money doesn't mean we've got to spend it. If we really absolutely need to do it, then we should. And I know, Chief, you've been going through and making sure on the police side. I just want to kind of make sure that, you know, and I, it seems like every year we're going through. And I know we've been looking at leases and new ways of doing this where we put down a very little amount. And the bookkeeping on a lease, when you put down the lease, do we account for, if we're leasing a $35,000 car, maybe it wouldn't be a lease, but whatever, would we take the $35,000 hit in this, in this plan in that year? Or do you spread it out over the four to six years?
It's spread out over the life of the lease.
Okay, and just to clarify, to make sure I was listening, are we leasing any of these? I, I heard the word lease, but I see.
We have an existing lease now, so there's seven vehicles that were leased. We have an existing lease now, so there's seven vehicles that were leased year before last.
No, that I know, but what about this batch?
None in this batch. Next year, we will be leasing again.
Okay. And again, we skipped this year, because?
It's less than 200,000, so the bulk purchase is, again, really, we said, indicated 200,000 to $250,000. So, next year, we've identified the need for, in that range, or even a little bit more than that range for next year.
Okay. I'll go ahead and bring it back. Thank you, council. Who would like to go first? Councilmember Murphy.
A couple of questions on the police vehicles. We talk about the fact that the target replacement cycle is four years, 75,000 miles, but yet on the first vehicle, we only expect to be at 68,000 miles when replacement is delivered, and on the other one, we expect to be at 65. Are we getting, can we move this back a little bit? Does it make, let me ask that better. Is it advantageous to move this back till we can get the $75,000? Slow down the purchase a little bit?
I think it just depends on the quality of those two vehicles and the repairs and maintenance that we're currently incurring. Sean is the best one to speak to that, or the chief.
Mayor, City Councilmembers, the first vehicle, the Dodge Charger Unit 48-2, that one, we actually have pushed out, and it does have fewer miles. However, that car did have some ongoing electrical issues with it, so that's why some of the mileage was down. So, and that one, but that one's already actually been extended a year, so over time, that time becomes more sensitive, sort of like with the motorcycle. That one's actually more time-sensitive as far, by time-wise, rather than the mileage, because of how it's run. And then, the third vehicle, that was the unmarked vehicle, that will be closer mileage, but that's one that we wanted to repurpose to replace a vehicle that we had to replace because of the gas tank issue, so that one would continue to be in service, just in a different capacity.
Okay. Brett, when we started this, the goal was to avoid the December rush for, all of a sudden, we need more police vehicles, and we're getting there. How close to we are to the self-sustaining goal are we? And I mean, Troy asked, and I asked you last night, you know, about the, we're buying versus leasing, last year we leased, now we're going to buy, next year we're going to lease. When does that smooth out? Or does it?
It may not smooth out, and we still could use an infusion into the fund to really have 100% long-term sustainability. The leases that we've entered into have given us a lot of flexibility, and so that is, we are able to, as the mayor asked about, we are able to charge the lease payment and charge it into the schedule and continue to replace the vehicles that we really need to replace.
Okay, and you think overall, though, we're getting towards a self?
We're getting closer to it, yeah. The leases that we entered into two years ago have enhanced our possibility of becoming fully sustainable.
Okay, thank you.
No questions. All righty. If there's no questions, can I get a motion to move this item?
I'll move.
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All right, thank you. Now, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to prepare, we're going to, with a very short amount of time, about six minutes. City Attorney, do you think we'll have enough time to go through any of the items in closed session? Should we take a few minutes?
We can, we can try it, and then, we can come back at the end. We have it on the agenda for the regular meeting, too, so we can come back in the end if we don't finish it in the few minutes we have.
I would think the first three items listed in closed session will not take a considerable amount of time, and then, as Brett mentioned, all four items are listed on the regular meeting agenda, so we can take anything remaining up at that time.
Okay, good deal. So, why don't we go ahead and go into closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council now adjourn into closed session to discuss items 4A through D as listed on your agenda.
Thank you.